Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to our Bountiful City Council Work Session Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, and we'll begin with our Open Meetings Act training. We'll turn the time over to our attorney, Mr. Bad Jepson.
Yes, thank you, Council. So every year, we're required by State Auditor's Office to do an open meetings training. Can we get these up?
Yeah, it's nice.
I'm not actually ready yet either, so it worked out. I'm plugged in. It's not my computer. Oh, that is not my computer. There we go. Okay, so we're gonna open with a video from the State Auditor's Office, and then we will go through some specifics, some examples, talk a little bit about ethics, and we'll be done. My computer's turned up all the way, is there a...
So what is the Open and Public Meetings Act? It's the state law that ensures government actions and deliberations are openly conducted. Before we continue, keep in mind that this video is an overview, and exceptions may exist based on your entity type. We focus on local government, not state requirements. When in doubt, read the law and consult...
Sorry. What's that? This is a video the State Auditor's Office made for us so that we can all get the same training in the state. Where do you... I think my computer's all the way up.
So what is the Open and Public Meetings Act? It's the state law that ensures government actions and deliberations are openly conducted. Before we continue, keep in mind that this video is an overview, and exceptions may exist based on your entity type. We focus on local government, not state requirements. When in doubt, read the law and consult with your legal counsel. So what is the Open and Public Meetings Act? Public Meetings Act.
Is it just a volume problem, or... If you put this microphone up to your laptop, will that...
It's coming through the sound system.
Oh, okay.
Act. It's the state law that ensures government...
That's a good idea. Yeah.
So what's considered an open and public meeting? It's when a public body quorum, also known as a simple majority, meets to discuss or act upon government business. It includes the meetings sometimes referred to as workshops or executive sessions. Regular meetings, public hearings, electronic meetings, and emergency meetings are all open and public meetings. Open and public meetings don't include chants or social meetings. A public hearing is a type of open and public meeting where citizens have a reasonable opportunity to speak. Public hearings happen when a government adopts a budget, imposes or increases taxes or fees, or transfers money from an enterprise fund. These meetings have extra notice and posting requirements and won't be addressed in this video. An electronic meeting is a type of open and public meeting that's convened electronically, such as via phone or the Internet. Remember, the governing body must adopt a resolution, rule, or ordinance allowing and governing electronic meetings. UTMAs adds additional requirements, too. An emergency meeting may be held to discuss an urgent matter due to unforeseen circumstances. In order to hold the meeting, the best notice that's feasible is provided of the time, location, and topics to be considered. An attempt is made to contact all governing body members, and a governing body majority approves the meeting. An open and public meeting may be closed to discuss any of the following: a person's character, competence, or health, collective bargaining, litigation, certain real property transactions, including any form of a water right or water shares with specific restrictions, security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, investigations of criminal misconduct, and private or protected information per the Utah Procurement Code, including trade secrets. A closed meeting may be held only if a quorum is present and the meeting was properly noticed. Two-thirds of the governing body present at the meeting need to vote yes to close a meeting. Quick math lesson: two divided by three equals sixty-six point seven percent. Let's say your governing body has five members present at the meeting. If three out of five members vote yes, that equals sixty percent, which is not equal or greater than sixty-six point seven percent, which means you're one member short and would need four out of five members to vote yes. During a closed meeting, a governing body can't interview someone applying to fill an elected position, discuss filling a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, discuss the character, competence, or health of a person whose name was submitted for consideration to fill a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, approve any ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation, contract, or appointment, or take a vote, unless it's a vote on a motion to end the closed portion of the meeting and return to an open meeting. When a governing body closes a meeting, the following must be publicly announced and entered into the minutes of the open meeting at which the closed meeting was approved: the reason or reasons for holding the closed meeting, the location where the closed meeting will be held, and the vote of each member of the governing body either for or against the motion to close the meeting. If a closed meeting is discussing a person's character, competence, or health, or security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, or several other exceptions, mostly related to state bodies or project entities, no recording or minutes are required. However, the presiding member needs to sign a sworn written statement stating such. If the closed meeting is held for any other reason, a recording must be made, which includes date, time, and place of the meeting, names of members present and absent, and names of all others, except where disclosure would infringe on the confidentiality necessary to fulfill the original purpose of closing the meeting. Regular open and public meetings require 24 hours' notice. The public notice includes the meeting, agenda, date, time, and place. Public meeting agendas need to include reasonably specified topics to be considered, with each topic listed under a separate agenda item on the meeting agenda. The governing body may not consider a topic in an open meeting that wasn't on the agenda. If a new topic not on the agenda is raised by the public during an open meeting, the governing body may discuss the topic. However, final action may not be taken on the new topic during that meeting. Additionally, entities holding regular meetings scheduled in advance over the course of the year need to provide annual notice of the entire year's meeting schedule. The notice must include date, time, and place for each meeting. Notice is posted on the public body's website, in a public location such as the location where the meeting will be held, and on Utah's public notice website in accordance with Utah Code 63G-30-102. Typically, posting on the public notice website is done by the records officer, recorder, or clerk. However, it's the governing body's responsibility to ensure notice is provided. State Archives has prepared a training manual and quick guide for owners and posters, as well as training videos that can be accessed at their website, archives.utah.gov. Written minutes and a recording are kept of all open meetings, with few exceptions. Written minutes include the date, time, and place of the meeting, the names of members present and absent, the substance of all matters, names of citizens providing comments, the substance of the comments provided, any information a body member requests be entered into the minutes or recording, and a record by individual member of each vote taken. A body with elected members must record each vote in list format by category for each action taken by a member, including yes votes, no votes, and absent members next to each member's name. A recording must be a complete and unedited record of all open portions of the meeting from beginning to end, and be labeled with the meeting date, time, and place. All or any part of an open meeting may be independently recorded by any person in attendance if the recording does not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Pending minutes means written minutes of an open meeting in draft form subject to change before being approved by the public body that held the open meeting. Pending minutes must contain a clear indication, such as a draft or pending watermark, that the governing body hasn't yet approved the minutes, and that the minutes are subject to change until the public body approves them. Approved minutes means written minutes of an open meeting approved by the public body that held the open meeting. Entities must establish and implement procedures for the public body's approval of written minutes. Public meeting pending minutes, approved minutes, and recordings are public records under grammar. Any individual who publicly presents information relating to an item on the public body's meeting agenda must provide a copy of the information for inclusion in the public record. Make pending minutes available to the public within 30 days. Within three business days after approving written minutes of an open meeting, make approved minutes and any public materials available at the Utah Public Notice website, the entity's primary office, and the entity's website. Within three business days after holding an open meeting, make an audio recording of the open meeting available to the public for listening.
We're making a motion to go to a closed session for one of three reasons: to discuss litigation, the character competency of an individual, or a pending real estate transaction.
Very good, and she makes that motion every...
So, actually, no. Just a friendship, there's no legal requirement to disclose. Simply a friendship, no legal requirement to disclose.
But someone could. You could say...
So, actually, no. Just a friendship, there's no legal requirement to disclose. Simply a friendship, no legal requirement to disclose.
But someone could. You could say... Thank you so much. Any questions, Council? It's great training, really important information. Thank you so much. Okay, well, we're grateful that Representative Ward is here, and we've invited our legislators to come and visit with us, and so you're the only one that I see so far, but we may expect Representative Ballard. Anybody know?
I just got a text from Representative Ballard that her committee is just wrapped, so she's on her way. I will text her the fastest route.
Okay. So she will probably likely be joining us, and we know that Senator Wyler is out of town in Mexico. So, really glad that you're here. Thank you. Before you begin, was there anything that any council members or staff had in mind that we communicate before you start into whatever it is you'd like to tell us? Any updates on your end? Anybody? Okay. Okay. We'll just communicate. We'll just have a conversation here. But if you want to just kind of help give us a little update on things as you see it, that'd be great.
Sure. I don't know how much of an update it is. You know, I have two housing bills that I know were proposed by the legal cities in downtown Bountiful. Early on in the session, those bills had a committee hearing that did not pass out of the committee, that it was a good discussion. As you know, this day is opening together the housing plan of some sort that will come together over the course of this year, and there were other small updates to the Modern Income Housing Plan writ large. I guess my hope is that as we go forward on the housing issue, that we can find a way to make it easier to build smaller housing and more housing with less rules about it. I continue to be concerned about even some of the bills that passed this year that are adding what I see as desirable outcomes, but that are more things that you hang around, more requirements that you hang around the project before it until it can be built. And most recently, the session has turned to saying, well, the property has to be owner occupied, and then we'll approve. And then, on the one hand, do you want owner occupancy? On the other hand, that is an additional restriction. That sometimes makes it hard for the person to get a loan on the property. So I hope eventually we can find some ways to just make these easier to build. Mostly, I don't know what the future holds in that, and I was... Do you know what some other good policies have passed this session on that issue? I have tried to be in touch during the session. I know Gary, you have been in touch with me, and Kate, you have been in touch with me about different bills towards which you had objections, and then it's not always easy to know when there's negotiations that maybe make a party come to neutral, but you have been in touch with me, and I have appreciated that, and I'll try to be back in touch with you about those issues. You know, there was one just today about the Rabelt bill that I understand had some various negotiations on it, where there was initial opposition that kind of came to a neutral-ish opposition, was my understanding. Individual bills that I'm working on that don't necessarily relate to the city, I've had some good success with my bill that will make it easier to collect child support in some cases. I feel like our child support system doesn't work particularly well in the state right now, and it would make it easier to collect child support for daycare expenses, because right now that system doesn't function really at all, at least with respect to the state helping collect it through RRS. And when a parent gets their parental rights terminated because of abusive towards children up till now, we've just forgiven whatever debt they owe on child support, and the bill would say, well, you stole your debt, you created your debt just because you behaved so badly that your rights got terminated. I had a bill passed through committee today about the medical examiner's office for death certificates. The medical examiner has gone from reviewing maybe 10% of the cases up to where now they're reviewing over half of the deaths in the state, and that costs, on average, $220 every time they do that. And so that has just involved more and more and more death certificates, and they're not out of line. The state has told them, well, in every cremation, you have to review it first, and that has gone from 10% of deaths to up to 55%, and likely with the cost of variable change in what people want, it's likely continued to head up. And so we just need to find some way that if the death certificate is spelled out right the first time, that the medical examiner doesn't have to come in and put this extra burden, this fee, on families who are already in a tough situation there. I think the big bill that passed just today, just the end of the session, was the election bill, Hospital 300 that passed the floor, perhaps it's still a little over to the Senate, where I don't know what... I don't know if... You can't really tell. I mean, the bill was presented in caucus, and then we voted on the floor that afternoon, and so that didn't leave a lot of time to really parse back out who supported it or opposed it. I know our Davis County clerks still had some concerns about it, but I know that just from talking with them really after the vote, that wasn't something that we really had time to understand ahead of time. And the bill, I don't, I mean, the bill still goes to the Senate, and I don't know if it's all baked in, or if there really is still is room to make some other improvements and adjustments to it.
Could I ask a clarifying question about that? Because there's been a lot of reporting about this bill, and what you said is even today, there were negotiations happening behind closed doors about what this is going to be. And I'm just wondering, with this mail-in voting, will it be, will you be required to bring your ballot to a Dropbox? Or it will be actually still mailing it traditional, in a traditional way?
Yeah. You will have the option, so there will be an additional security fee on each ballot, which is just writing the last four digits of your driver's license or state ID. Either one, and they've put together some free way to get the state ID. But, but that, those last four digits would be the primary way of identifying that it was you who sent the ballot in, and then you would also sign it. But really, the primary way would be you putting the digits from your driver's license on it, and that can be, that you can go drop it in a Dropbox, or that you just mail it, at your discretion. So you have to opt in, but once you opted into, to receive the ballot in the mail, then you could vote by mail essentially forever if you just renewed when you went to renew your driver's license.
Great. Was there any talk about how voters would be notified that they need to opt in? Or the fact, you know, like maybe everybody would get a mail piece, letting them know?
Ninety minutes during floor time to try and beg an amendment back and forth that I really wanted in the bill that I felt like was a big help. So did it talk about that? But I didn't have time this afternoon to focus on that portion, notification of the different processes will also be important. The bill was quite long, and so I felt, to me, that ability to not get cut off after just skipping one general election was by far my most important sticking point. And I felt pretty fortunate that they were willing to listen to me, even in the right from the course of floor time to get that put in. But there's other questions that do still need to be raised, and it might, that might easily be in the bill. I, I didn't have time to review all those points.
Sure. Okay.
I would say the bill is in a much, much better place than that first version that came out. I feel very comfortable about that.
Yeah.
I would say overall, from a League of Cities and Towns perspective, Representative Ward has done good work to try and highlight this issue, that I appreciated your resident survey, and then the, the replying of your, of your resident survey, so everyone would know kind of where you stood on that, and the things you would be trying to make better. I personally, and then I find this to be a very challenging bill, and, you know, the League of Cities and Towns has taken an opposed position, and has hoped to remind the legislature that we, at the municipal level, do do 50% of all elections, and that has helped, mail-in voting has helped increase voter turnout and participation, I think we all agree, is, makes our system better. So I want to say thank you for the fact that as, as things are whipping through, I was, I was telling Councilwoman Child that she was asking me what stage we're at in the session, and I said week two, or the second to last week is shenanigans week because of the crossover that has to happen. And so things move fast, and the fact that Representative Ward was able to get a crucial amendment to make a bad bill better, but not perfect, I think is great, and the opportunity we have to continue to engage on the Senate side to make it even better, I think is critical, and I think mayor.
Even less bad.
Yeah, even less bad, maybe even good, but it's not there yet. But I think your point about how people will know, I mean, the state had an interesting problem a few years ago when they decided we were all going to get emailed vehicle registrations, and then we're kind of surprised when none of us realized that, and all of a sudden, vehicle registrations dropped. That's a really important question.
Yes, it is.
But I do want to give you the kudos for using the limited time you had with that new bill to make it slightly better.
I think it'll make it functional for most people who want to vote by mail, and vote with any degree of regularity, then, then I believe that it will still make that happen fairly. And I'm happy just to answer whatever other questions you might have on your legislative campaign.
What, what's the status of your bill that was, that would raise this threshold for signature, I mean, lower the threshold for signature gathering?
The status of that bill is that it was not smiled on by the Rules Chair, who refused to let out of the Rules Committee.
So it wasn't even heard in a committee?
It was not allowed to go to. So that, right now, Utah does allow, you know, we have a dual track to get on the ballot. You can either go through caucus convention, or you can gather signatures. Utah is an outlier compared to other states. Most states, you just get a few signatures, and then you're on the ballot. Utah is by far the biggest input from the caucus convention system to the ballot, but the way we're a real outlier is the number of signatures that we require. So our number of signatures that we require is 10 times as high as the average of other states. So other states might have, like for a congressional race, 400, and we have 7,000 for a congressional race. So that just makes it be this huge industry, it makes it be a very high burden cost-wise. I mean, gathering 1,000 signatures is possible if you have 10 committed friends and nine you have to dial for a week or two.
Or if you're wealthy.
Or, or if you're wealthy.
Mm-hmm. You can pay.
An average person, even at that lowest threshold of a house seat, probably couldn't do that.
It's really unfortunate, yeah.
And Representative Tresser, who's the Rules Chair, said that he was still concerned about the plurality problem, about where, what if you had eight candidates in a race, and so someone only got 25% and was in the office? That's no concern to him, so he said he might be more willing to consider that if it was some kind of accommodation, or if there was something that solved the plurality issue first. And so time will tell, you know, we just continue to have little suggestions made this way, and that way, and this way, and that way, and I don't know how that will all turn out yet. One of Utah's longest-term plans.
Well, as you know, as you know, one of our biggest concerns is that we share constituents with you, and so, you know, our, the same people that vote for you are the same people that voted for us, and our roles, though, are really different, of course. And so one of our biggest concerns is always going to be partnership versus preemption, where we are working hard on the things that we work on, water, streets, zoning, the things that we focus on as cities, and then that the state, instead of making demands or unfunded mandates, or that the state work in partnership with us. And so obviously, that's something that we always ask for your help with, and we appreciate that, you know, for the most part, we feel like that's what you do, is work with us, and, and recognize that, that we're, we're elected officials like you, and we're working for our constituents like you, and trying to focus on our, on our jurisdictions. So I appreciate your work. What other questions do we have for Representative Ward?
I have a question, if we may, or at least bring something to your attention. Senate Bill 154 by Senator Brammer, this is, the title is Legislative Audit Amendments. This is a bill that's now passed the Senate that would entitle the office of the legislative auditors to have access to, to client, attorney-client-client privilege documents of local government and others. It's pretty concerning to us as a League. Are you aware of that, of that bill at all?
Yes, to some degree. Let me just tell you how that bill is presented in the caucus room, the way, the way we as a caucus get told about that bill, and I don't know if that will help inform the way that you communicate back to the legislature. So the way that it was presented was to say, well, look, this is a constitutional thing, where it says the legislature auditor does have the ability to audit. And they said what has started happening is that all kinds of different entities, the two that they brought up in that instance weren't cities, but it was the Governor's Office and the Attorney General's Office, have just started saying, anything you want is attorney-client privileged, because we have the attorney in the room at the meeting. So we'll make sure that we have the attorney in the room at every meeting, and then everything that's discussed there will be considered attorney-client privileges that we, we just don't have to give to you. So that didn't sound quite right either. And, you know, they gave an example of Attorney General Reyes, who did not want to give up his calendar, so you, of course, might think that he had been somewhere in Ferris, but in fact, he hadn't really been to hardly anything, and the calendar didn't have hardly anything on by the time it actually came out. It had been on his calendar, but even all those things had been redacted off in the name of attorney-client privilege. So I don't know, I mean, when something is honestly attorney-client privileged, that needs, that needs to for sure be honored. I don't know how that can be split in a way so that it's clear that it isn't just being used to not respond to the auditor in any meeting where the attorney is present. I, that's how much I know about it right now, so.
That's great. Kate?
I was just going to say that J.C. Skinner, whom I know you know really well, she testified on this issue on behalf of the State Bar on the Senate side, and she outlined some of the judicial processes that exist already in the court system. When you're going through a discovery process, for instance, on how, how the courts already handle whether something is privileged or not, and the process that can do that, and even ways that they could expedite, especially in the Salt Lake Court District, which presumably where these would all be, so that you could get that determination, because I, the local government perspective is definitely not that if, if the city of Banff were subject to an audit, that if we just, you know, copy Brad on everything, that everything's protected. But there are times where we're engaged in, in litigation, potentially litigation with the state of Utah, where we, where that shouldn't be something that the auditors get to look at, and break our privilege in those, in those instances, and that there are already these judicial processes that are tried and tested and true that you could do, and you could even give them more of an expedited process to do that. I think one of our frustrations, again, coming from the League of Cities and Towns discussions where we've been hearing this issue, is Senator Brammer could sometimes be a challenge to meet with, and we should definitely use some persistent help from the inside in raising some of those things, and some of them are helpful, I think, if you can, because Senator Brammer is an attorney in his day job, if we can insert into the discussion someone like a J.C. Skinner that I know you know, and probably respect as I do for her understanding and prior work with the executive branch and the courts, to help him, help him formulate other ideas. I, I think we agree, it's not right that you seek to hide information with an improper assertion, assertion of privilege, but their privilege does exist, and it's a tried and true principle that needs to be protected.
Sure, and I believe that for sure. And I didn't bring that up to say that that is my perspective, but just so that you would understand how God presented that.
No, I think you were really careful in explaining that this is what you were told.
Or just the way it was presented, right? So I think now it's in the House, and not in the Senate, and so it's a good time. Today, I think, was the first day that you let me know about it, and the timing is good, because it's going to happen, something's going to happen in the next eight business days about, so being in touch is now is the time. So thank you.
Yep, and we'll keep you posted on, we know it's being amended, and try to give you some idea of what we can live with, right?
Is no way, no how, never, you just vote no? Or is, is there some other thing that if it changed, then it would become acceptable? And that is super helpful, if you're in touch with me and those kinds of discussions come up.
Yeah, for now, we're, we are opposed to it as it's drafted.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah. One more, if I may, Mayor. This is Karen Peterson's, it's HB 454, it's the Transportation Utility Fee Bill. She, this is something that was a negotiation, well, actually, it stems from cities several years ago imposing a transportation utility fee. Banff doesn't have one, and, but we'd like the option potentially sometime in the future. And they were sued, and it went to the state Supreme Court, who upheld the right of the cities to impose this fee. There were feelings, though, that there may be needed to be some guardrails, especially around the study that takes place justifying the fee and a few other things. That all went great. It got to the very end of the session, and at the, and at the, at the very end of last year's session, you may remember that there was some opposition brought by a prominent religious organization in the state that they didn't want to be subject to the transportation utility fee. Yeah, so that, that is, that is currently the, the status of this bill, with the exception that I think that with Representative Peterson's bill, we have come to a place where we support what she's doing. Now, there is an alternative bill that's coming from the Senate side, from Senator Brammer, and that's the one we don't support. So just keeping you posted on those two.
Sure, and I think, you know, that's going to be, I'm just guessing, that that's going to be one of the ones where the Senate's going to pass the Senate's version, and not pass the House's version, and then somewhere in the, in the last day or two, I don't really know how it'll turn out, but Representative Peterson's bill makes sense to me.
And at the end of the day, we don't, we don't need a bill. The Supreme Court said the cities have the authority to do this anyway, but we have no problem creating those guardrails, so.
I think the bill is a useful clarification about, because there's always going to be gray areas between fees and taxes, right? And when we get into a situation where there is a gray area, then it's good to say, okay, let's delineate out, so everybody knows which side of the line they're on.
Thank you.
What other questions or issues do we have?
I don't know if it's helpful to Representative Ward, but we could always kind of, with some of the key hot issues that are still on the, probably the top of the League of Cities and Towns kind of radar and tracker. So you're already aware of the gravel bill, so, and shared that we think the substitute is vastly improved, and if that substitute is adopted, then likely the opposition drops, probably not all the way to support, but, but, but we'd probably drop opposition there. HB 198, I think, the billboard bill, we're still in some discussions there. This is about whether you can move a billboard if there's construction along interstate or a state highway, and whether you can, how far you can move it, and can you move it into another city. League has done a lot to try and negotiate this and expand those areas in particular because of I-15 reconstruction planned and coming, but we've really drawn a hard line on moving it from the city that it's in to a different city, that you can relocate it within that same city, within these.
I forget how close that bill is to the top of the, in the third grade calendar, the third grade calendar.
I can tell you in just a minute.
You can let me know tomorrow.
I may see you at the Capitol tomorrow, so I can do that. It looks like, you know, that we had, as the League of Cities and Towns have been very concerned about the Public Safety Bill that was largely aimed at Salt Lake, but included other cities of the first class, and cities globally were concerned.
is going to pass the House's version and then somewhere in the la, in the last day or two, I don't really know how it'll turn out, but Representative Peterson's bill makes sense to me.
And at the end of the day, we don't, we don't need a bill. Um, the Supreme Court said the cities have the authority to do this anyway, but we have no problem creating those guardrails, so.
I, I think the bill is a useful clarification about because there's always going to be gray areas between fees and taxes, right? And, and when we get into a situation where there is a gray area, then it's good to say, okay, let's, let's delineate out so everybody knows which side of the line they're on.
Thank you.
Um, what other questions or, um, issues do we have?
I don't know if it's helpful to Representative Ward, but we could always kind of list some of the key hot issues that are still on the, probably the top of the League of Cities and Towns kind of radar and tracker. Um, so you're already aware of the, um, the gravel bill, um, so, and, and shared that we think the, the substitute is vastly improved and, um, if that substitute is adopted, then likely the opposition drops probably not all the way to support, but, um, but, but we'd probably drop proposition there. Um, H B one ninety-eight, I think, the billboard bill, um, we're still in some discussions there. This is about whether you can move a billboard if there's construction along, um, uh, interstate or a state highway and whether you can, how far you can move it and can you move it into another city. Um, League has done a lot to try and negotiate this and expand those areas in particular because of I fifteen reconstruction planned and coming, um, but we've really drawn a hard line on moving it from the city that it's into a different city, that you can relocate it within that same city within these, um...
I forget how close that bill is to the top of the, in the honorary calendar, the third reading calendar.
I can tell you in just a minute.
You can let me know tomorrow.
I may see you at the Capitol tomorrow, so I can do that. Um, uh, it looks like, you know, that we had, as the League of Cities and Towns have been very concerned about the Public Safety Bill that was, um, largely aimed at Salt Lake, but included other cities of the first class and cities globally were concerned about the preemption. Uh, it looks like we may reach a much better spot with that one based on today's negotiations. Um, so happy to, to give you updates on that one as that one evolves, um, tomorrow. Uh, the League did take, um, some strong positions on some of the bills dealing with the judiciary, um, H B five twelve, um, and I'm going to blank on the other number, Gary, if you can help me, but, um, this one deals with whether retentions are at fifty percent or sixty-six point six-seven percent.
It's a little odd for someone who's in a majority and say that that you could get kicked out of office.
Yes, and, um, and then, uh, um, creating a Legislative Judicial Review Council, um, also gave us some concern. Those are maybe a little bit outside of where the League would normally be because those are judicial issues, not municipal issues, but, um, the L P C Committee that the Mayor and Councilman Hickson and Gary and I serve on, uh, felt really strongly and...
I mean, if you feel strongly about those, I hope you'll turn the volume up.
Gary, am I missing any of the high priorities on the tracking list for the final eight days?
No, I was kind of...
Pardon me, I was looking kind of through the list. Um, billboards is on the third reading calendar circled, so.
Oh, circled, all right. So who knows, I mean, I, I'll tell. Well, you'll, I mean, I don't know what negotiations will happen on that and it's hard to know when a bill is circled, when it may settle, it may be before you. Then it's hard, you know, on the floor to know if the changes were already made or if it's still just like it was, so hopefully you'll, you know, be in touch if you catch when it's going to be uncircled or, or whether or not it's changed.
Thank you.
That was for that one issue about cities.
Thank you so much. Um, I really appreciate your time, especially during the session and we're grateful that Representative Ballard has been able to join us and we know that you both had meetings right up until this meeting and so, um, we only have five more minutes left, so if, if you're okay, we'll ask Representative Ballard to come up and join us and, and she's my, she's my representative, so welcome, thank you for being here tonight. And, um, we were just, you know, trying to go over the top, the top bills that the League is, the Utah League of Cities and Towns is tracking, um, so any, any, um, any questions you have or comments you have about in these last few minutes before we wrap it up?
Um, I apologize, I was finishing my committee meeting, which is my, my first responsibility, um, during the session.
Sure, yeah.
But I appreciate Representative Ward answering all the tough questions. So, um, no, but I, I think we really appreciate your input. Really trying, I know Representative Ward does the same, to respond, um, as soon as he can, to you specifically and to our constituents. Um, sometimes we have the ability to really change, um, an outcome and sometimes there's a lot of momentum that we have to stay political capital or we just vote against what the momentum is and so sometimes it's very tough decisions, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Most of, actually all, but one of my bills are in the House and the Senate, um, I don't care, I haven't, uh, a lot of early bills this year, um, I took two, and one's already passed, um, but, um, so I'm happy to help with that.
That's great. Did you happen to hear, um, Councilwoman Bradshaw was just running through a few of the top priorities for the League, the billboard issue or the, did you happen to hear any of that little recap?
Okay.
Okay. Well, I, I understand. I mean, I know that you were in meetings right up until now, but, um, anything that council members would like to relay or questions any council members have? We'll make sure that we do communicate with you on what those, on what those top things are that we're watching for and, and concerns we have or questions, so, um, any last things you'd like to tell us?
Um, you know, I, I love how we each have different committees, uh, that we are part of. Representative Ward is the Chair of Social Services Appropriations, I'm the Vice Chair of Law Enforcement Judicial and Criminal Justice Appropriations and then we sit on various standing committees and so I appreciate, um, being able to lean on my other colleagues when they've been in those committee meetings to hear why there was so much opposition or so much support or, or if it was split, um, that we all come from different backgrounds and so, um, so your voices are really important to make sure that we understand the impact on Bountiful City and on our residents and so, um, your voice is really important to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I thought of one thing we should alert our legislators too.
Great, yeah, thank you.
And this is the, uh, bill, it, it was actually moved into H T R twelve today in the form of a resolution and this is the idea of studying future state parks. Uh, this is just the idea that we should study some areas and, um, Representative Cutler had been interested in looking at area between, um, the Bee and Farmington Canyon for that study. Um, it ended up getting merged into Representative Elessen's bill that lists three different areas that the state may study, um, one near Flaming Gorge, one, um, one, one extension around Little Sahara and then, and then this potential area in Davis County. So it would be a long road there, but just so that you're, uh, aware.
Thank you. And, um, look forward to the follow-up with that, but I think what does help is for you to send us a text with kind of a summary here of things that are going on. Um, usually I'm up with my emails, but sometimes depending on the issues of the day, uh, maybe not. So, um, that just helps us to make sure that we're on the same page for some of the new substitute that might come out. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Representative Ballard and Representative Ward and Beverly. We really appreciate your time and your efforts on our behalf and for all of your constituents. So thanks for what you're doing, a week and a half to go. Thank you very much.
For having us and for all of your work. Yeah, all the time.
Thank you. Great, well, thank you so much and we will close with this, um, work session and we'll be right back in just a minute with our regular city council meeting.